All right. I will call the I will call the public session of the July 28th special city council meeting to order. I'll do a quick roll call. Brian?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Norm?
Here.
And John's here. All right, let's stand for the flag salute. Flag salute.
He's just gonna grab something off his desk, we can continue. And for the record, we did have closed session and there's no reportable action at this time.
Alrighty. Any, I don't think we have any presentations, proclamations. Angie, anything there? Nothing? Okay. Um, public comments? Anyone wish?
Oh, sorry, there is one presentation.
Oh, Kathy's got one, okay, alright. She didn't raise her hand, she didn't wave at me. Come on up Kathy. Yep.
We'll have to stop meeting like this. Well, good evening, Mayor Papisah. If members of the council, staff, citizens of La Harbor Heights, Roy Francis, Adam Nazarov and I were appointed by the city council to represent La Harbor Heights in the Pointe Hills Habitat Citizens Technical Advisory Committee, or C-TAC. I've given you and the staff an update from the Habitat Authority that was given to the mayor for activities of the preserve in La Harbor Heights for June. Could you please add it to your administrative record? And in summary, fuel clearance had been completed before July the 4th weekend and touch-ups will continue as necessary. Dumping in June on the side of East Skyline Drive was cleaned the next day after receiving an email from the city. And for matters like these, the city can email info@habitatauthority.org and we'll take care of it. The Habitat Authority appreciated the invitation and attended the two pre-meetings for the annual fireworks fire patrol for July the 4th. The Authority has been patrolling extra hours every 4th of July for about 29 years. The Rangers from the Habitat Authority contracted through the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, or the MRCA, actively patrolled the preserve with, in trucks equipped with water, with Habitat Authority staff and other MRCA-trained firefighters, lending additional patrol support. Together they worked beyond midnight and collaborated with local fire and law enforcement agencies to keep a close watch over the hills. The city of La Harbor Heights and its local fire watch group are deeply committed to fire safety and the Habitat greatly value the opportunity to collaborate with them with these important efforts. Also each year on July 4th, the Habitat Authority utilizes volunteers to help with Preserve Wide Static Fireworks Watch, which included volunteers stationed at Powder Canyon from 7 till 10 p.m., although they, they were there longer than that. And they were over at the Black Walnut entrance. With 20 volunteers this year, they served as extra eyes and ears to spot and report any illegal fireworks or suspicious activity, educate the public and discourage unauthorized access after dark. This proactive presence has helped to deter the dangerous behavior and helps to ensure a rapid response from emergency services if needed. The Pointe Hills Habitat Authority was awarded a grant from the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy for Wildlife Preparedness. There was an article in the Whittier Daily News on July the 18th about this. It includes elements such as vegetation and hazardous tree clearance, equipment purchases including a flail mower and a 2,000 gallon water tender to be used for firefighting efforts, vegetation mapping, fuel, fire fuel modeling and more. This press release with more details can be found on the Habitat Authority's website. And as always, please visit, visit online at habitatauthority.org or on the social media sites for more up-to-date information about happenings and events. And I encourage all residents to feel free to reach out to myself or to Adam Nazarov or Roy Francis in the Habitat Authority's advisory committee and any questions about the Habitat Authority. I also want to bring to your attention, there's a flyer that I put on there, on your, um, at each of your desks. And it's about a wildfire safety workshop on Wednesday, August the 13th at 6:00 p.m. at the Roland Heights Community Center. And this is hosted by Assembly Member Lisa Calderon. So I just thought I'd give that information to you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Do you want to hear about?
The vector control.
Vector control. Mosquito season is upon us and so far the abundance of mosquitoes are at normal levels. And the efforts of the LA Vector Control have not detected any West Nile virus or the number of travel-related dengue cases that they have seen have been manageable, thus keeping the risk for local infection in residents at bay for now. Six West Nile virus vector mosquitoes have been located in San Fernando Valley and a press release is being sent out to them or has been sent out to notify the area. In Orange County, public health officials had mosquito samples collected in Anaheim and Garden Grove and they tested positive for West Nile virus. So just remember, mosquitoes do not fly far from their water sources. If you don't have any standing water anywhere and have a lot of mosquitoes, maybe your neighbors do, just call up the vector control and they'd be happy to come out to help you find the source, just call them. The SIT or the sterile insect technique is still ongoing and the scientific technical department staff are monitoring new areas for a possible expansion of the SIT efforts next season. I've actually gone and saw where they were going to build this lab and I'm pretty excited about it because we may have a way to control mosquito populations through vector control and thus potential exposure to tropical diseases may drop, will drop. And for more information or education, please visit the website at glamesquito.org or you can call Vector Control, um, the Greater LA Vector Control District for any information. And that's it.
Kathy, pass on our thanks to the Habitat and the Rangers in particular for their help. On the 4th of July, I think we had three, three Rangers out for our pre-brief and it was uneventful, which is always a good thing. Pass on our thanks for that. All right, um, I don't have any cards for public comment, any public comments? Okay, committee comments, any committee members? Uh, let's move on to city council comments. So, um, I know the 4th of July seems like a long time ago, but I do want to publicly acknowledge the work of several groups within the city. You know, starting with our, our Fire Watch team, we had a really good turnout from Fire Watch. Norm, thank you and, uh, and others for their work at our little informal, uh, EOC. It, uh, I think it was very successful. I hope to have a, a debrief at the next, uh, the next Fire Watch meeting, talk about what went well, what, uh, what we can approve on for next, next year. But all in all, I thought it was a very successful event. Got a lot of good feedback from the community. Thanking, you know, thanking for the people that were involved for being on the watch. Also want to thank, uh, you know, our fire department. We had, uh, a really good, uh, good turnout. I think you had three, three apparatus out on the 4th, chief?
Two engines and a broken throttle.
Yeah. So, um, again, really, really non-eventful, so uh, thank you to the Fire Watch people for making all of that happen. And then Rafferty for you and staff for pulling all the, making the facility available for us and being there to support us. And then also for city staff because we did have, we have three or four people out from? Four? So yeah, staff had four folks out. We tried something a little bit different this year. We actually closed some of the roads that gave us trouble. So, um, Skyline and then up near your house, I think we closed some of the roads up there to keep people that looky-loos out of the, out of the city. And that seemed to work well. We had, uh, we funded a deputy and a, so our deputy adjusted his hours to be here. And then we funded a deputy and a CSO to be up in the city. And we just had none of the issues we had the year before with people illegally parking and, and giving, giving our fire personnel grief for enforcing our fire code. So, I think it went really well, so thank you everyone.
I think we should acknowledge the fact that the mayor hosted a dinner or what would you call it, barbecue here for all these groups before they went out. And he was quite instrumental.
Thank you, Carol. All right, any other comments? Okay, administrative report, city manager.
I just wanted to echo your comments with, uh, Fire Watch and 4th of July. It went really, really well. And it was nice to see us, city staff, fire department, Fire Watch and the Rangers working very closely together over that time period. So it was, it was great to see and we're looking forward to keep doing it many times in the future. So that was good. And also wanted to give a quick thank to the, thanks to the Improvement Association. Music in the Park just wrapped up earlier this month, so it was a great event. There was a lot of good bands and it was good to see a lot of people out and about it at the Music in the Park, so I just wanted to thank them for that. That's all I have tonight.
City attorney? Community Development.
Uh, this month, building's been pretty busy. They issued 17 building permits. But overall, in the month of June, uh, Building Department issued 69 permits. So they were, they were pretty busy overall issuing permits this month when you account for plumbing, mechanical, electrical encroachment and then all the other permits and grading and everything. So they were very, very busy this month. We took in three code enforcement complaints, so we have active, 18 active cases, seven closed cases. We issued four stop work orders, so there's 60 active unpermitted construction cases. We closed 12 cases. We took in two planning applications, approved one project. So continue to be busy there. And a little later tonight, myself and Mr. Munoz from Code Enforcement, we're gonna do some dark skies inspections so he can learn some of those things and be able to do those on his own in the future.
Okay, fire team.
Yes, so as you can see with the month of June, uh, we had a total of 54 calls. What's important to note is on the back of that page, uh, there's a tremendous uptick in the automatic aid that we're giving to the county. I think we're up about 500% almost. If you look at the numbers between 2024 and 2025, 2024, we did 24 calls automatic aid. And in 2025, we did 120. The other uptick that's very substantial is the fire calls. So we did have, uh, three major structural fires in the city of La Habra, in two in the city of La Habra, one on Dorthea, the big one at, on White Hill. And then just recently on Citrus with the county. We had a carport with five cars that we were actively involved. So, uh, I'm very happy to report that, uh, and to use Mayor Papisah's word, we have developed a very robust fire department. I have, at almost, in a week, I will have 11 per shift. That's probably, those are probably numbers that you're not really familiar with. But when I first started, we were struggling to have four per shift. So now we're up to 11 and I'm gonna go to 12. Uh, only because I think we can provide total service to the city with that many people. I'm hoping to bring on people that'll help train our people up in, uh, truck work, which means more detailed, uh, hard appliance and, uh, tools and equipment. So that's coming, but, uh, other than that, it's been a pretty normal year outside of those fires. And you have a slight uptick in the islands as far as fire calls go up there. And then in closing, the fire prevention continues to be, uh, going down the path that, uh, Mayor Papisah proposed and asked to have a robust system. And I think we're working well towards that. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe next month we can, uh, have the fire marshal here. Um, I'm looking at the, the report and it seems like, you know, we're seeing a significant failure rate. So significant number of failures, so it's, it's not quite at a half, but two-third failure rate.
Right, but next week we're gonna, uh, you're gonna see some people coming into compliance. We're putting out some warrants and stuff to help, uh, bring those numbers down. And we'll be more aligned with, uh, what the proposed effort is supposed to be there. But yeah, we certainly have, uh, chief attorneys in the meetings next time.
Yeah, and it would also be good in this to see, um, month over month too. So I know, I know we, he's, he started fairly aggressively back in April doing inspections. So it'd be good to see the trend about how many of the failures are coming into compliance and, uh, what the total, what the total inspections are across the city. Anything else, chief?
No, that's it, thank you.
Uh, so I, I know we're on an off-cycle here from the meeting, so I don't see our sheriff's deputy, looks like he's got the statistical report attached to the agenda.
Correct.
All right, let's move into the consent calendar. Anything, anyone wants to pull? No. Get a motion? Twelve? Okay. I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items nine, 10, 11.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg? Carol? Norm?
Yes.
John, yes. All right, item 12.
I want to add on this, the addition of Park 3. I'd like to add the walking trail grant.
I'm sorry, the walking trail?
Walking trail grant.
Grant, got it, thank you. Any others? I know we're gonna talk about, um, guard rail. I think we've got an approval item for that. So that was the one thing, I wanted to make sure it was on there. Any others? I don't think we need to approve this, do we? No, all right. Any other discussion? None? All right. I'll go ahead and close the consent calendar, open the public hearing for the six-cycle housing element update.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, item before you tonight is our six-cycle 2021 to 2029 housing element update for the city. Previously, the city council had adopted the housing element back in 2022. Um, and as part of that, did some rezonings and some other things. There were still some outstanding issues after we sent that version to HCD for review and certification. Since then, we had done a couple of cycles, a couple of rounds of technical revisions with HCD. Um, and then it sort of sat for a little while. More recently, we have been working very diligently with a consultant and city council and residents on getting the housing element updated to be able to meet state law requirements for that. Um, so some of the highlights for our current version that we are working on for the housing element. Um, we have a total arena allocation of 244 units. So housing element requires us to plan for those housing units. It doesn't necessarily require us to build those housing units. Um, so to do that, we have to be able to have properties that are zoned at a density that can provide for affordable housing. Um, so part of what's included in the housing element is some rezonings of property. So, um, we had previously rezoned some properties over off of Harbor Boulevard to allow for multi-family zone, um, in that area over there. HCD had some concerns related to, um, not having access to all utilities in those locations for it. With that, uh, the biggest issue seemed to be sewer, not having access to sewer in that location. So they came back to, to us and said, you know, all sites need to be able to have access to sewer. Um, so at that time, we went back through, we did some exercises to look at the areas where we do have sewer, which in our city is along Hacienda from our southern city limits up to about East Road is where our branch of the sewer trunk runs today. Um, so we looked at properties along there and identified some sites, went through the process to look at potential usage and numbers of housing that could be developed on those sites. Uh, we had a few rounds of community meetings and input from, from the, the neighbors in the surrounding areas. Um, and then ultimately, we were looking at it from the environmental perspective of it. Uh, there just became too big of an issue related to evacuation and emergency ingress and egress. By having that much housing units and that small of a location along Hacienda Road, we can, would make significant impacts to, uh, being able to evacuate people out of the community in the event of a natural disaster or a fire. And we'd become very impacted. So we went back and worked back with the housing consultant to look at alternatives. Um, and some things did come up from there. We looked at potentially rezoning a property, um, the, the school site, we call it, Site, Site A, uh, which is along Hacienda. Um, it is in an area where it's wide enough to be able to widen in front of that area if need be to make it four lanes, um, in that particular location. Um, by doing that, the total size of the property is a little over four acres. We're looking at the potential buildable site of being just under three and a half acres when you account for setbacks and creek area to it. Um, so that's one area that has been designated to be able, to be rezoned to multi-family to allow for, for housing. Uh, council also did take other action to address comments from HCD related to access to utilities along Harbor Boulevard. Um, and have put together a CIP program in our budget and prefunded that program with $500,000 to account for the ability to be able to put a reimbursement program into place in case a developer does look at developing those sites. There's a funding mechanism to be able to offset the cost of an installation of a sewer line to be able to accommodate those sites for arena. Uh, the other things we looked at are a couple of the church sites at town related to what's SB4, which allows for religious institution to do some, uh, some affordable housing on their properties. We've identified, um, the first Armenian Pentecostal Church along West Road and also Hillcrest Church along West Road. Those are potential areas where SB4, AB 1851 would be able to be utilized um, to be able to accommodate some additional arena numbers. And, um, our other thing is ADUs and looking at having a good, robust ADU program. We've had quite, uh, more recently, we've actually had a lot of inquiries and interest related to ADUs. We've had quite a bit of questions from, from residents about developing an ADU and looking at the potential for it. We definitely have seen an increase in the last couple of months related to ADUs in general, which is a good thing to it. So those are some of the things that are in there, your housing element tonight. Um, it has, went up to HCD in January for a review, for them to look at it. Um, they have given us a sort of, uh, a please adopt and make your housing, your, all of your code amendments and rezonings and submit it back to us to hopefully be able to be recertified for it. Um, so the letter is attached to the presentation and report for you tonight along with a couple of other things. Um, there's a resolution in there that will adopt the housing element. So it'd be your official action to adopt this housing element and direct staff to submit it to HCD for review and certification. There's another resolution in there for the amendments to the general plan because the housing element is a, uh, element of the general plan. So we would modify the general plan to replace our old housing element with a new housing element and make some necessary changes to the land use maps uh, within that general plan today. And also two ordinances, one of technical code changes and also amending our official zoning map to add the multi-family zoning district there on Hacienda Road. Um, all of these items have recently been to the Planning Commission at their July 10th meeting. Um, they reviewed and unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the housing element and the code amendments and, and forward them off to HCD for review and certification. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. I don't know if our city attorney has any additional input or questions.
Any questions?
I have one question, if I might please. Uh, the, uh, two churches designated as potential, uh, emergency homeless shelters or transitional homeless shelters, at least beyond their property. Uh, have the, uh, neighbors been notified of that proposal?
Uh, we did not do a notification to neighbors in that particular area for those in the, in the overlay zone that could get adopted.
Uh, I, I request that the, uh, neighbors be notified before the next meeting so they know what's going on, so they have their full opportunity to, uh, uh, make comment.
Any other comments?
Well, if we're not required, are we required to notify the neighbor? I'm not trying to hide things from the neighbors, but this has been going on quite a while.
Not in that situation, no. But we certainly can, to council member's point, if you so wish, we'll do that.
Just the immediate neighbors or?
Well, who do we generally notify when there's a, uh, say, uh, you know, say a conditional use permit or something like that required? Don't we notify people within 300 feet of the property?
That's, that's quite a lot of people. I mean, there's at least three sites, right?
It's an overlay zone that's along Harbor, in that area over there that encompasses?
Oh, that's just the one site?
Two churches.
And the two churches, uh?
Yeah, we're within that overlay zone.
I guess my question for the city attorney then, does this create some type of precedent where if in the future similar actions take place and we don't notify, does it expose the city to any legal?
Of a council member, so that would be fine.
I think we owe the, this courtesy to our residents to let them know what's going on so they can know, uh, whether, what's going on so they can make written comment or, or come to next meeting and make a comment before the final adoption.
I just want to make sure that we, that we get this, our arms around this and define correctly. So you're talking just the immediate neighbors with properties that bound these others?
I'd settle for the immediate neighbors because I presume they would tell the others, but, uh, at least immediate neighbors.
Okay, so we're defining immediate neighbors by the properties that, that directly bound?
Directly, directly bound, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we give clear guidance. Anything else? Motion?
Move the adoption of item 13, uh, the six-cycle 2021-2029 Housing Element Update, items A through E.
Do we have to read those, Todd?
Yeah, we do not, but I, I, I don't know if it's, if there's any public comment first?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask, thank you, Todd, yeah. Any public comment? All right. Sorry, Greg, I jumped the gun.
So he made a motion, so I'll go ahead and second it.
All right, Norm?
I'd love to vote no, but I unfortunately have to vote yes on this.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's a yes. All right, I'll, uh, close the public hearing and move on to administrative items. Uh, item 14.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, item for you tonight is a proposal for a safe, clean water demonstration project at the park. Um, this is, we take advantage, uh, take advantage of dollars from Measure W, which is a tax measure that was placed in, uh, in LA County. Um, this is not the municipal side. There are two aspects of the safe, clean water Measure W. There is the municipal side where
There is the municipal side where we receive funds related to how much is taxed to people within our properties. There is also a regional component where this is funding regional projects of regional importance across the way. There's been a project that has been submitted and gone through that process for the regional funds. It would be to install a project in the park. It would use a proprietary system that would capture stormwater runoff in the parking lot. So, it would be installed in the upper parking lot and the lower parking lot. It is a trench drain filter system from Star Water that takes and collects stormwater and runs it through various media to filter out all of the contaminants that may be in that stormwater before it runs off as part of it. And then that water would then be used to water some irrigation at the park and set up some demonstration gardens that would utilize the runoff, rain runoff water from the parking lots of the park. This is a project that council has looked at before a couple of times. It takes a couple of steps to it. One is there, attached to your staff report here, is a transfer agreement with the county since it would be done by the city. There is a transfer agreement that goes along with it that would be something that we would enter into with the LA County Public Works and the County of LA Flood Control District for the funding aspect of it. Through this is where how we would receive funding from the regional components of Measure W. And also because it would be done, the majority of this work would be done by a consultant and an engineering firm and contractor. There's a need to have an agreement with that contractor to be able to put together those things. So, the recommendation for the council tonight is to adopt Resolution 2522, which approves the participation in the Los Angeles County Safe Clean Water Regional Program, which would be the transfer agreement with the county and authorize the city manager to execute those agreements on behalf of the city. Then direct the city attorney to prepare and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Star Water for the preparations of plans and the installation of the water demonstration project at the park. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer what I can. One of the project proponents is also here and he may be able to answer more of the technical aspects to it if you have some more technical questions.
So, Raph, I'm surprised to see this on the agenda because last time we saw this, I thought we had some conditions around bringing it back to us, like bringing it back as part of an overarching plan for the park with like what we're gonna do at the parking lots, planting trees. I think I expressed my concerns about doing this work because we've got the handicap ramp that needs to go in, we've got this work, and I know we talked about doing some type of, you know, tree work or planters to provide shade in the lower parking lot. So, at least for me, I'd like to see a more comprehensive plan for how this fits into all this stuff we need to do at the park. Because what I don't want to do is I don't want to start this and then have to do something else that impacts this. That's my concern.
I have a couple of questions. So, you indicated there's two pots. There's the city pot and the regional pot. In the city pot, we get about $150,000 a year. Is that, or we have that amount of money that we can spend on keeping water clean? And then the regional pot would be this project. And the project is how many, $400,000 or more?
More than that, yeah. And the regional pot of money would pay for the construction of the project. So, construction and installation of the system, the retention and the demonstration gardens at the park.
Okay. Now, you're recommending that the city attorney prepare an agreement. Who would have to pay for that agreement?
Typically, that is the cost that the city bears as part of going through that agreement process is the preparation and installation of it utilizing. This is a slightly different animal than a normal, like professional services or public works contract. I mean, city attorney has a set of standardized agreement templates that we work off for, depending on the type of project it is. This would have to be potentially customized a little bit for this particular project.
And then I did discuss this briefly with you and I thought, you told me that the county wouldn't move forward unless there were engineered plans, or I might be using the wrong word, for this project. Is that correct?
To my knowledge and understanding, for us to be able to receive the funding for the construction aspect of it, that won't begin until environmental is completed. So, we'd have to go through an environmental review and process. To do that environmental review process, we would need plans. So, technical drawing plans, technical specifications would have to be prepared and approved. An environmental consultant would be needed to do an environmental review and that would have to be adopted and certified, go through that CEQA process, naming ourselves and the county as a lead agency as part of it before they will start releasing funds for the actual construction aspect.
And who would pay for the envi, is that a CEQA document or who would pay for the environmental review?
CEQA document in our Measure W municipal side that we submitted for our plan for this year, we included funds within that to be able to have funding available if council would look to move forward with it. There's funding source available through our municipal side of Measure W fundings to help cover the cost of plan preparation and environmental review to be able to get to the construction aspect of the project.
So, we would, the city would pay for the attorney fees and the city pot would, some of those funds which could be used for other things would be used for the environmental. And then I glanced through this very long transfer agreement. There's a lot of, it's a 30-year, I'm not sure this project is 30 years, but it requires 30 years of monitoring and keeping track of the project. Is that correct? Or, and if that isn't done, we might have to pay back some of the money?
There's the potential of that, correct.
So, I'm, is there any direct benefit to our city for this project that you can? I understand it's, might be beneficial to the environment because it's a new type of filter material and it could be good for the world, but I wonder if, what, how it actually benefits our city or our residents? I guess we might be able to get a bigger project in the future if we're successful with this.
Correct. If we, if we're successful in constructing and implementing the program and the project, as we go through that, we are applying for other regional type projects. Obviously, when they're looking at those, they can look at the ability for us to be able to get a project approved and then do the work through that regional aspect of Measure W so we can potentially look at larger projects in the future, showing that we have a track record of being able to complete these projects.
And this ongoing 30-year monitoring and reporting, who would be responsible for that?
Ultimately, we're responsible for the monitoring and the reporting of the system in that. The system itself is proprietary, so they have, Star Water has talked about playing a part in that and doing the monitoring and preparing the data for us to be able to submit it. But that would definitely be something that we would want to include in any agreement with Star Water for the actual project. And at the same time, they have looked at and expressed the ability for them to go and submit for ongoing maintenance and upkeep for the project so we can be able to have some, potentially have Measure W monies to offset those costs of ongoing maintenance and repairs of the system.
That's all the questions I have. I guess I'll withhold comments, right? I can bring my comments in later, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
I think it might be helpful at this point to ask Richard Watson, who is the consultant that brought this project to us initially, an expert in stormwater. I'm pretty sure he can address virtually everything you ask, Carol, other than the attorney's fees for Todd to review the transfer agreement. But as you know, county transfer agreements are pretty much non-negotiable.
Right.
Because they're part of the funding.
Well, I guess my feeling is, I'm happy to work on a project that helps the world, but I don't think, I think they should put a pot of money in. Star Water should give us some money.
No, they are. They're putting, they're paying for the project.
But they're not paying for the attorney's fees?
No, they're not.
I think they should put some money in a trust account that we can draw on so that we don't have to take it out of our money. That's just my comment. I don't want to argue.
Doesn't the attorney money come out of that pot of money that we have for the water?
No.
No? For the municipal side of it?
I don't know if we can utilize that money for that side, that part of it.
I mean, I would think you could. It's part of the project.
We could ask Mr. Watson, he is fairly well-versed in that aspect.
Perhaps, Raph, we should sort of try to put a, to put a wrap around what kind of attorney money we're talking about. You have a form, you have a form contract that's a transfer agreement from the county. That's the contract. And near as I can tell, those are rarely deeply negotiable. But we could ask our city attorney what his general feeling about order of magnitude on attorney's fees to bring this plan into position. I mean, essentially, people, Proposition W is a long-term funding for stormwater. Money comes out every year. It's a social benefit to the city and helps us clean our water. But I think if the attorney's fees issue is a big issue, then we should perhaps ask Todd to comment on that.
I can comment on that. So, I think as you stated, yeah, county agreements are generally non-negotiable, frankly, maybe tweaks around the edges. And we have template agreements as far as both construction and professional services that we as a city have that I've previously put together, that we send them and then if they have red line changes, we go back and forth. That isn't that convoluted of, or expensive or time-consuming of a process. But I will say, I mean, I, other than what I've heard at public meetings about this project, I mean, I've not been involved in this really at all and I know very little bit about it, other than whenever I hear about it, I question what it is. So, I don't really know if there's gonna be other legal issues outside of contract review moving forward. I'll just, in full disclosure, I mean, I just don't know.
I'm talking about the contract between, I'm not talking about the, what is it? I keep forgetting.
Transfer agreement.
The transfer agreement. I'm talking about, we have to draft a contract with Star Water that somehow binds Star Water. And this is an Australian company. We don't, I don't know who we're dealing with. So, somehow we have to have a contract with them before anything, anything goes as to what they're gonna do and they're gonna, they're gonna take the responsibility for applying for these ongoing maintenance money. That's the contract I'm talking about, not the one with the county.
Okay. When you mentioned a number of pages, I thought you were talking about the county contract. If it pleased the chair, I'd like to ask Richard Watson to come up and address the issues that Councilman Engelhardt has brought up. Okay with you?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I'll try to address some of what I just heard, if I may. My name is Richard Watson. I was, I came tonight to support the staff's recommendation. And as I think many of you know, I've met with staff and members of the council in the past. And I first became aware of this project at a watershed area steering committee where Star Water's local representative was there and I was there representing a project we were proposing in another watershed. So, I've become quite familiar with their media. In fact, I'm proposing to use it. Let me answer one of the, I think, major questions. Star Water did pay back basically the local returner. They got a group called CORE to do that. I think it was $236,000, which in most cases, the local governments, you know, pay as a local return and the clean wa, Safe Clean Water Program wants that coming from the local governments, but they got that money for you. O and M is a big deal with, and I'm quite involved with the Safe Clean Water Program in another watershed. I happen to be the watershed coordinator and I have something like six projects that are either funded or in the process of funding in the Los Cerritos Channel through the Safe Clean Water Program. One of the possibilities in this is even if a project isn't funded through the Safe Clean Water Program, if it addresses the Clean Water Act, the so-called MS4 permit, you can get funds for O and M, even though the project was paid for by somebody else. And that, O and M, often the operations and maintenance, it'll go for the life of the project or at least through 2048, which is the end right now of this program until it gets reconsidered. There is, there is no sunset clause. And I happen to be involved with four previously funded water capture projects in the Los Cerritos Channel and three of the four now have full O and M funding. And it's paid in five-year increments and it just keeps getting renewed until 2048. So, I don't think the city has to worry about O and M. And they would help you put together that and obviously the city has to apply for it, but it can be put together, I think, by Star Water or I can help them. There was discussion of the transfer agreement. One of the most serious things about the transfer agreement is the scope. I recently had to help the Gateway Water Management Authority, which is a COG or related to a COG, because they had submitted something on a fairly large project. It's one I was involved with, $8.6 million scientific study. And their scope that they turned in wasn't acceptable by the, from the Flood Control District. So, they asked me to rewrite it, which I did. It got a little longer, but it met all the qualifications. So, and the scope, which is the part of this agreement that's the most difficult, I will help Star Water with. I think there's basically a scope already in there, rather voluminous application. And there's one other thing that came up in a recent discussion I just wanted to mention to you. Someone mentioned this potentially sets you up for future projects, which is quite true. And one of the things that, in a conversation with Greg, he brought up the drainage along Hacienda Road and went down to, what's the name of the street? Ropasado. And so, I've driven that and looked at that and I've talked to Star Water and they've agreed that if they have this project, they and their engineer, and they've already hired the engineer or had him do some work until the city agrees to do the project. They're not finishing the design, but they've got some engineering plans already and they were actually originally planning to do the handicap ramp, but I believe you have a separate agreement on that, so they're planning to work around it at this point. So, that'll modify, they'll have their engineer modify the plan. But on Hacienda Road, there is a serious drainage problem there because the swale is undersized. And we, so we could come up with a way for you to be able to apply for funding for that. And there are a couple of different ways. I won't get into the details now, but I think you'd be able to get funding for that. And I think it's possible you could get some funding for some other projects related to prevention of slope failures. The Safe Clean Water Program is an amazing program. Right now, at two and a half cents a square foot, which is what it is for impervious area, it raises something like $281 million a year and each of the watershed areas gets a certain chunk of that. So, I think this is a good project. I've been in favor of it. As you know, I've been talking about it before. I think it will definitely protect the city because one of the things that I know schools have had a problem with accepting off-site water and this sort of thing is if there's a spill and in a parking lot, there's that opportunity. And this happens to be just, the site happens to be just a little ways upstream from the monitoring station at the fire sta, or near the fire station. So, I think you're protecting yourself in the long run, which I think is a benefit to the city. And as was mentioned, there is a benefit to the environment in water quality. So, I think it's a really good program and I can try to answer other, you know, questions you might have. I know quite a bit about it. I've made, I just came back in early June from a trip to Australia to further research the media because this reactive filter media is something pretty special. Even the County of LA is interested in it. And that's because of the contents of it, you know, something like 25 to 45 or so percent, depending on what constituents are aiming at, is local green waste. And it seems to make quite a difference in the effectiveness of a media. It's like... to make quite a difference in the effectiveness of a media, unlike anything we've got around here right now. I'd be glad to try to answer any other questions. I don't work for them. I just happen to have a great deal of interest in it because I'm going to be using their materials, too. If you've got any questions, I can try to answer them.
Well, do you think they'd be willing to put some money in a pot?
Well, as I said, I think they've already put $236,000 in the pot because they paid the local return, and they did have communication, maybe it was the previous city attorney. Two agreements were sent to them, and they said either one, they preferred the shorter one. They could also send you a copy of an agreement they have with the City of Mission Viejo. It relates to a golf course, but it's, you know, it's acceptable to attorneys here. And they've done work in the United States before. They did work for Boeing in Long Beach before COVID, and they did some work for some metal recyclers. After COVID, they didn't come back, and then they made this proposal, and I've been fascinated by it because it's a demonstration project. And as I say, I'm planning on using the material, too. My projects happen to be bigger, and they're a little longer in the future.
I'm just going to say, I've talked to you, and I'm very impressed with your credentials, and you've done a real favor for the city because you got us the city money.
Well, actually, they're the ones who recommended it to you.
Anyway, so it's just, is there some way, so we're not out any front dollars?
Well, I think your local return is in part designed for that. You're allowed to use something like 30% of that for ongoing sorts of things, and 70% is supposed to be used for projects related to water quality that relates to the Safe Clean Water Program. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to take some money out of that to do some of this, like the sequel and this sort of thing.
I'm talking about the attorney's fees.
That's okay. That's legitimate, too. I can't commit for the company paying extra because they've already invested quite a bit in rewriting the proposal and meeting with you and this sort of thing. I just happen to have a lot of faith in that company, and as I say, I'm proposing to use them. My projects are a little further in the future, and they're a little bit bigger, or considerably bigger. But my recommendation to you is to accept the staff's recommendation. I just think you're going to benefit and you're going to look good by doing something with this, which I'm about, you know, now working with the flood control district on two pilot projects using this media, and they're quite interested in the media. So if you demonstrate it before I get around to these pilot projects, they're going to be up here looking at what you've done, because, you know, Boeing is basically out of town now, and so I just think you're going to look good, and it's going to set you up for doing some other things in the future, which I can also help you with. As I mentioned, I know a lot about it because I've been involved with the Safe Clean Water Program since it, before it began. Anything else, Carol, or anyone else? If not, I'd just close by saying I support the staff's recommendation, and I think you're really going to benefit by taking that recommendation and moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rafferty, have we done any assessments of how much staff time this will consume?
They have said that they will do the majority of the work. The consultant to Starwater will do the majority of the back and the forth, and it should theoretically not take a considerable amount of staff time. There will obviously be staff time involved because just the sequel process alone, we would have to be involved in that process, and RFP, selection, review, all of those things. So there is some staff time in the future, but they are going to potentially take on the back and forth with the Safe Clean Water folks at the county to be able to process a lot of that back, the paperwork and those things with the county on our behalf.
I mean, that's what I asked the council to consider as we look at this, is we've got a lot going on in the city, struggling to hire people to come in and do what I'll call the basic work we need to do, that we really need to add to the complexity of what I'll call an optional project. This doesn't directly relate to public safety. It doesn't directly relate to running the city. So that's my concern.
Yeah, well, that was my hope was Starwater, I mean, they seem to be in the big bucks. Why they couldn't advance some money so we could hire people, you know, experts in the area to represent our city. That was my theory or my suggestion.
The ramp, I guess the question we had before on the ramp, that we could coordinate with that with the project?
Sounds, I believe that was addressed in the comments.
Oh, that can be done, then, I guess.
Yeah. I'm just, again, I know we have some residents that have continued to be upset about the trees being removed at the park and have asked for replacements to be installed, possibly in the middle of the parking lot and some other areas to give shade, you know, from the midday heat. That's why I was saying earlier about coordinating, you know, kind of all the other projects we want to do at the park before we move forward with something that's not going to be easily worked around. I don't know. I don't know if this impacts it or not, but my concern is, is that if we want to do something with foliage or planting trees at the park, and we don't have a plan yet for that, how does that plan fit in with this?
Well, the research that I've done is that it won't affect the ramp because the ramp is on the Hacienda Boulevard side, and the collection area on the upper park would be on the eastern side. So they're not even, they're not close to each other, and they could, one could be done and the other one could be done separately. They could be done at the same time. There is trenching that's going to have to happen to take the water flow down into the lower, into the lower parking area. They do all that. That's part of the price. I don't know anything about trees being planted, so I can't speak to that. But I was not concerned at all that it would affect adversely the ramp project. It seems to me, my recommendation would be to advance this, but my view is that stormwater will become important for us. I mean, we bit a bullet when we didn't have the oil spill make it into the stream. And this is one of the few, because it's a locally adopted water ordinance, one of the few places we're going to be able to seek more money from on a continuing basis, and there's a lot of money. And we don't have any stormwater meaningful funds in the city. So if this would be a badge of courage for the city to do, and we would, and we don't really go out of pocket but some attorney's fees, and being an attorney, I understand they could be expensive, but I can't imagine, there's been draft documents drafted already exchanged by the previous city attorney. So I don't know that it's a big contract issue, but in any event, I don't think there's a huge issue. Maybe there should be an overall plan for the park, but then we still have that application pending to rebuild the gymnasium. So if that were to happen, it would be a, that would, you know, if we were to get that funding, that would be, obviously, then everything would have to fall off that schedule. So I don't really know. It just seems to me like a simple little project that won't cost as much money and will protect the creek.
Todd, have you looked at this agreement?
No.
Yeah, I'm just...
What was the question?
If he had looked at the agreement. I, you know, we brought up...
The only agreements I know about is Starwater asked for some agreements, and I believe, I believe it was Mr. Litvin, we sent a short form and a long form. Wasn't that from you? But it was very small and vague. It wasn't like specific, like this one would have to be.
If it was, it was about a year ago, and I can't remember. Did you? Was it me, or was it?
They had, previously had some old city attorney form ones, which are a little bit shorter. They've also, I think, council member had shared with them our current city attorney's forms, which are generic in nature, generic public works nature. They're not, each one has to be crafted to be specific to the project.
I'm just concerned that if we enter into some agreement with Starwater, that they perform, that we have some kind of...
Well, I mean, I've heard brought up today twice now that, you know, this thing can contain a spill. So let's say there is a spill like what we had a few months ago, that's not by the oil company, but by some, by us, by someone else that doesn't have, you know, insurance, and this system gets damaged. Who's on the hook for fixing it? Is it us? I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, let's say you have illegal dumping in the park, you know, because we heard about spills, and the system gets damaged. Is it the city, then, that has to pay to maintain it in that case? Does Starwater maintain it? Know those things? Is that, so I was asking, Todd, if you looked at the agreement and understood?
Yeah, I have no idea currently, just being honest.
Thank you. Hey, Raff, do you, have you heard anything to this?
No, not to that level.
So what are we looking for tonight? I mean, is it to, do you want approval on this, or do we want to move forward with a review, or what are we looking for exactly here?
I want to say, I sat in on a couple of meetings, and we talked about a bond or insurance. We wanted to make sure Starwater had insurance. The lady that does our monitoring was concerned that this filter hadn't been approved by some agency. I don't know if she's right or wrong. And she was advocating for some kind of insurance against, what's the word, pollution insurance if this somehow caused a problem? And so that's where I'm coming from, is if we're going to do this, we need to protect ourselves, I think. And I don't know if she was right or wrong, but those were things she was raising.
Well, you know, any contract we enter into a STAR is going to have all the standard protective provisions that we put in every one of our construction agreements. I mean, if we, these people are providing what would normally be our share of this, which we probably wouldn't invest ourselves in because we don't value it too highly. But they're already putting in this money from COR, which is essentially an affiliate of theirs to flesh out the cost of the project. So a contract, you know, Todd drafts a contract with STAR, it will protect the city. The only question that underlies that is, do they provide adequate evidence of insurance, additional insured endorsements for us? And do they have, you know, the money is, and they have some commitment from COR that the money will come in once we sign the transfer agreement? If we don't sign the transfer agreement, it's all over, and we just put this away. I was the guy who moved against this months ago because I didn't understand it. So I spent the last few months understanding it. And to me, it's a simple, easy poof. I don't think it's a big deal, unless, of course, we have enough construction going on at the park that it creates a problem. But this is mostly underground anyway. It's not above ground. It's not, we're building a, we're not building a slough here. We're going, we're running, you know, underground offer water transfers from the upper park to the lower park, and it'll, so the, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like a major issue. But perhaps the recommendation from the staff is to accept and sign the transfer agreement, negotiate agreement with STAR. That's what I see it saying. That's probably the way I would vote to have it move forward. So let's just simply test it, then, if there's no other discussion. So I recommend that we adopt Resolution 2025-22 approving the city's participation in the LA County Clean Water Regional Program and authorize the city manager to execute the Safe Clean Water Regional Program transfer agreement on behalf of the city. And direct the city attorney to prepare and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Starwater for the preparation of plans and installation of the demonstration project at the park. If, so that's my motion, and my comment on the motion is that if our council doesn't feel it's a safe agreement, then it won't move any further forward.
So you're saying the agreement would come back to us for approval, that's drafted?
Can we include the ramp as part of the project?
That is, yeah, it's the author, it's the, well, I guess really there should be, we should add a D then, that the, oh, maybe, let me do it again. We need to put in, into this recommendation, that STAR, that COR provides the secondary financing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We need to add into this, which is part of the plan that Mr. Watson's brought to us, that COR, the nonprofit agency, provides a $280,000 secondary financing. What would normally be our participatory cost, they provide that. That means the whole project's paid for except for the attorney's fees to do the contract. So I think we'd have to add that into the resolution, that we don't, that we sign the transfer agreement upon confirmation in writing that they will provide that secondary funding, Rafferty.
And Todd, you're ballpark for developing some type of agreement like this?
Agreements of this sort, yeah, are, 90% of it is formulaic, right? I mean, we'd have to understand exactly, you know, specs and all of that and scope of work. Like I said, I'm generally, I mean, I've done, I mean, I represent water agencies, so I know those types of entities, so I know what type of stuff should be in there. But, I mean, it's not a lengthy process once I get an understanding of the technology, I guess.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we need, does the council need to have D read back, or do we all understand what D was?
We should probably read it back if that's a question. What do we got?
The item D would be COR would provide the $280,000 secondary funding for the city, the city shares, the city match for the Measure W funding.
All right, because I've got a motion. Can I entertain a public comment in the middle of a motion?
Sure.
Yes, I believe it was $236,000.
Yeah, you got to come up here so the folks at home can hear you.
In looking at the application, which, you know, there was a column in there that said STAR had reaffirmed this, I believe it was $236,000 was the local, would have been a local match.
Seven, a motion with A, B, and C, and now D added.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Carol.
I would suggest we don't sign the transfer agreement till we, till Todd has a chance to look at this and find out what's going on.
Well, that's why I asked that the agreement would come back to us.
Is that what you meant?
That's what I meant, yes. I want the...
All agreements.
I want the, all the agreements. I mean, I think what we're authorizing is Todd to proceed to draft the agreement. We're agreeing to, on B, I think we need to modify. I think we need to have maybe a revision to the motion, which is to bring back the, not to execute the transfer agreement. I think both agreements, both the transfer agreement and the agreement that Todd's going to develop, need to come back to us for approval.
Yes. If I could ask, Richard, is there a timeline on this for us, Richard?
No, I believe the Safe Clean Water Program would like to see if move ahead, is going to, and that was just described, will work, there are different ways of working this thing through. We've done several agreements, as I said. Sometimes, like this last one, they didn't accept the scope of work, and I helped the other agency write a scope that was acceptable. So I'd be glad to work with your attorney because I understand the program pretty well.
Okay, so we don't have a hard deadline. We just have to move it forward.
No, we don't have a hard deadline, and once the process gets started, then we can interact with everybody.
Okay, then I would, I would accept an amendment to my motion that introduces the following sequence, that we require that the city attorneys prepare... require that the city attorney's preparation for approval of the Clean Water Program Transfer Agreement and a contract with Star Water for the preparation, plant installation and building of that be accomplished and brought back to the planning, the city council prior to adoption of the resolution for the participation and prior to authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
So basically, what we're, what we're authorizing tonight is Todd to prepare the agreement in C.
Yes.
That's okay with the second?
Still good? All right, I think I can be behind this. All right, Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. All right, thank you all. Item 15, and I think there's a typo on this, Raph. I think your signing authority is, oh no, my bad, I misread it. Go ahead.
So the item before you tonight is looking at the signing authority of staff. So our municipal code and purchasing policies set a limit of $10,000 for signing level, signing level for staff. So anything greater than $10,000 for goods, services, agreements must be approved by the city council. As we look at the way things progress in today's dollars, $10,000 now has become a pretty small amount of money when we're looking at a couple of things. A good example of that is on our agenda tonight is a section of guardrail. We, council had previously approved the replacement of the damaged section of guardrail. In the time since that, the other half of the guardrail has been damaged. But the cost of that piece is over our signing authority, so it has to come back to the city council to be approved before we can move forward with the replacement instead of being able to have staff sign for that additional piece to it. So we, we took a look around to some of the other agencies in our area to kind of see what similar, what the signing authority for like a city manager would be in those areas. And it looks like, in our area, it sort of ranges anywhere from like $25,000 to $50,000 depending on the agency, the size of their budget. So it is a, a larger increase to it. And that's why we brought it to the city council, something that has come up in conversations with the mayor and, and other, other people that potentially our signing limits are a little bit lower and could potentially delay or cause some issues with, with properties or projects to keep them moving forward on a timely basis. We, we set the signing authority limits back, I think, in 2007. So it's been quite some time since that was looked at as part of it. If there is a change that is going to be made to that, we would have to do it through ordinance since it is in the municipal code and our purchasing policy. So any, we'd have to bring forward amendment to amend the ordinance with, that includes the signing authority and update our purchasing policy to reflect any future change. So this is just a request for city council to consider the, the signing limit of staff, what we can sign for at a, at a staff level.
So I asked to have this put on the agenda. I just thought that it was time for us to look at it, given there's not a lot that can get done anymore for $10,000. It seems like, you know, a meter, something breaks at the park and we're waiting two months to get it fixed because it's got to come to us. So I, I'm supporting, you know, a change to, to this to make the city operate more efficiently.
Yeah, I, I support the change as well. And I, I would think that $25,000 would be a reasonable place to set it, absent any comments to the contrary. And I would say that the, the Secretary of, of, what do they call it, Homeland Security, she wants to sign every contract over $100,000. And $100,000 isn't even rounding error in the federal government. So no wonder that place is stopped dead. Just an editorial comment, none of my real business. But I agree, I think it should be increased. And if Rapherty's comfortable with 25, that's my feeling as well.
So we have 25 on the table. Carol?
Is there a, is there a problem with us getting a report for anything over 10? I mean, after the fact, just to see how it's going?
It's, in our, it's, it's, we do report out on spending. We do it, how often, Angie? The, the, what do you call it, the?
Warrant reports.
Warrants are everything.
Warrants. So we get warrant reporting, right?
Correct.
You want more than the warrant reporting? I mean, is it just everything over $10,000 you want to call out on?
Well, I, I wasn't sure. How often has this been a problem? I didn't know it was a problem, except.
There's been several recent issues where, especially with maintenance at the park, where we've had water issues that were over $10,000 and the grass is dying because it, the, the item had to come to us to get repaired. I mean, the guardrail was another example, but if we set it at 25, it wouldn't have fixed the guardrail issue. But, you know, we're exposed to that. I mean, you've got that guardrail that's been beat up now for three months. And I think there's a, you know, there's a liability to the city when that stuff doesn't get fixed in a timely, timely manner.
I guess it's just hard to tell by reading the warrants what the city manager has approved. They're totally two different things. Because I didn't know, so would it be hard to? If no one else wants it, fine.
You can set like a six-month review if you want. If it's something the council wanted to put in place, we could put a six-month review.
Everything over $10,000? Everything over $10,000?
Just, just a little summary.
So 10, between 10 and 15, that wouldn't be too hard, Angie, to do that? Because it'll fall on you, right?
Also, just keep in mind, we still have to abide by best practices in accounting. So it's a little weird to proceed with a purchase that goes against our purchasing policy, our threshold, and then go back and approve it.
No, I wasn't objecting to raising the threshold. I was just wanting a report as to how often it had to be used. And then if, just to report after the fact. Would that be a problem?
I can put something together.
So I guess what we're talking about is 25,000?
That's on the table.
I mean, that's well over the inflation factor for 10,000, but I guess we don't have to, if we go 25, we won't have to come back at it.
I, I mean, we looked at, I asked them to look at other cities. It seems to be where most other cities are at. I mean, I, I, like I said, I just think it's time that we, we increase it. You know, even the water district can approve. You know, the water district manager can approve up to, I think it's $100,000, is what I was told, so.
I mean, and there's nothing that prevents Rapherty, he has a sensitive item and it's not time-sensitive or anything, he can certainly bring it to the council. I mean, if it's a $10,000 expenditure, but it's a sensitive item, so, okay.
Well, if we're going to have a report in six months, we can take a look at six months, see how it's, later and see how it's going, basically. So I'd be inclined to favor it with the understanding that maybe six months from now I might change my mind.
All right, so, sure, I understood that. So what we're saying is not increase his spending authority and do the reporting for six months and see what's on the report? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I, I was saying, go ahead, increase the spending authority now. See how it works for the next six months and take another look at it.
Mayor, if I may, so we're, we're talking about amending an ordinance, right? So it's going to be the law if you amend the ordinance. If you want to unamend the ordinance in six months, you certainly can do that. But it's not like we're going to put in like a, I think that's what the plan is. You can't put in a pilot program that's in violation of our ordinance. Either amend the ordinance or don't amend the ordinance.
Oh, I, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting amend the ordinance. We'll see what happens six months, six months later, take another look at it. If we don't like it, we can change the ordinance again.
Make, change it back, sure.
That's, that's all I had in mind. Nothing fancy.
Sure, everybody understood what was going on.
All right, so we have 25 on the table. Are we?
Is there a motion out there yet?
I have, I have a recommendation of 25. I don't think it's a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend the Chapter 21030 of La Habra Heights Municipal Code for the purchasing poli, policy to raise it to 25,000.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Well, I had, the amendment was, isn't the motion also supposed, can I add the language or? Bad at procedure. Also, there's supposed to be a report in six months as to how often it was exercised.
That's a total separate issue.
Oh, okay, yes.
Norm?
Yes.
And John's yes. Just to clarify on the report, it's not, it's not a report in six months. It's a report every month for the next six months, right? That's what we're asking? Just want to make sure we're clear to staff.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Well, and FYI, we still have to do the first reading of the ordinance, second reading of the ordinance. It doesn't go into effect until 30 days after the second reading. So I don't think you need a report for the first two months because it won't be effective.
Thank you, Todd.
Well, he could report on, he would like to have had it.
Yeah, he couldn't, on his inner thoughts and what he would have done.
Let's, let's start the six-month period after the ordinance is finalized.
No, understood, yeah. I just wanted, okay.
I think we got it. Item 16, strategic planning workshops.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The strategic planning is a fundamental process which allows organizations to define where they want to be in the future and how they will get there. In small local governments such as our city, La Habra Heights, strategic planning faces unique challenges. We have limited sources financially and also in staff. So it hinders the ability for us to conduct thorough, long-term planning. Additionally, the annual budget is frequently mistaken for the strategic plan. While budgeting is essential, it typically only focuses on one fiscal year, which lacks the long-term vision of the strategic plan. Tonight, this is a good opportunity for council to set up strategic planning workshops to discuss a multi-year strategic planning process to include financial planning, policy development, and also capital improvement planning. Any questions?
Questions?
So as we, as we think about the future and we realize that grants are not being forthcoming, payment on grants are not being forthcoming, the costs of everything are going up. Our roads are, are consistently being supported by the general plan, by the general funds. The concept of these strategic meetings is to gather consensus on how we might approach making sure that revenues exceed expenses on a consistent basis over a longer period of time. So I would amend the recommendation from staff just to say that I, I think we should schedule workshops over a three-month period, starting in September, October, November, and try to do them on a Saturday, early Saturday, so that the public, these would be open forum workshops. Public could come and talk. Staff would prepare the various agendas for the discussion items. And we would try to move forward with trying to figure out what our strategies will be to keep this city sustainable and solvent and to, in light of a very, very rapidly changing environment. So I would, I would, so my, my motion would be to allow, instruct the city manager and the assistant city manager to schedule those meetings over a three-month period, one a month, preferably on a Saturday morning, so that we can get better attendance from residents that work during the day.
I have one question, and maybe it wouldn't work, but do we want to include any of the other organizations in the city with us? Like the planning commission, the roads committee and things? Or is that too much?
Well, my, my, my perspective was that certainly roads has to be involved. And roads has already commenced those discussions internally to try to understand what we're facing as we continue to develop these cost differentials that are negative to us. Planning commission? I don't know. And certainly roads. But I would say anybody can, any, any commissioner that wants to attend can attend and should attend if they want to be involved in this. I mean, this is all about whether La Habra Heights 10 years from now will be a city. That's really what this is all about. We know as a practical matter that as inflation continues and as our revenues are stale, are stagnant and with government grants being restricted, we have a significant challenge. Not just to the administration of the city, but to our fire department. These are significant challenges and, and so we have to, we have to be proactive and reach out for them. And I, I think we, but this, this is, this is a very important, you know, if we don't have, if we don't have sustainable income, then we don't have a city. If we don't have a city, this becomes accounting again. So this is, this is, to me, a very serious undertaking for all of us. So, but I think anyone should come and anyone that wants to participate can participate. But in terms of, this is a, this is a council-mandated meeting, in my view.
So who's, who's going to hold responsibility for developing the agenda of each of the workshops and who's going to lead them? I don't think that's something we leave to staff, right?
I'd volunteer to work with staff to develop agendas, to schedule it.
And then, you know, workshops have to be led. Are, are we letting staff lead them? Are we going to lead them? My, my, my suggestion might be that, that maybe work with staff on a proposed agenda. I would bring it back, maybe to the August council meeting. And then we can decide amongst us if we're going to have multiple workshops. You know, we should probably each take, you know, maybe each take one of them to lead and familiarize ourselves with the topics and be prepared to lead a workshop. Because, you know, you have to, you have to be able, I mean, it's, it's, the agenda should set a, a range of issues that we want to talk about. And then, you know, we should be prepared to take input on those agenda items and topics. I mean, Greg, I think you, you brought up several issues in the past about how to, you know, maybe one of the workshop is what you just talked about, right? Is the sustainable future of the city. How do we do this? What are the things that people are comfortable with? What makes people uncomfortable? I think you brought up another topic, right, the fire department. What does the five-year plan look like for the fire department? What are their funding needs? What are the, what are the income streams that we think we have? You know, what does a five-year capital plan look like for the fire department? So I think there's two agendas right there, right, that we can, that we can work on. So it's just a matter of what, you know, what do we want to accomplish so that we can, if we're going to publish them, we should publish the agenda ahead of time and make sure that people know what we're going to be talking about and come, you know, because I think different ones, especially if you're asking someone to give up their Saturday, they're going to want to know what, what, what's on the agenda for that day. It's my, my thoughts. Any, any others?
I think it's really important and I don't know that, how, how many we have to have, but we should at least start with the two and see how it goes.
Because I think, again, I think there's some things that folks on the council have been working on to improve the, the future of the city. I think those things should be absolutely workshopped. I think there's some great ideas out there on how to bring in some additional income for the city. But they're tough decisions. I mean, they're tough decisions that we have to make as a city because it presents a little different environment that the city would operate within, so. But it should be those broad, I mean, I think it should, it, it's probably But it should be those broad, I mean, I think it should, it, it's probably a better environment than a council meeting because you don't have all the decorum that you have to adhere to. And you can bring in a broad, broad list of ideas and, and workshop them and pull the threads and do the pros and cons analysis and come up with, with a list of things then that we can begin to explore and spend, I mean, more importantly, spend money on exploring, right? And that's, that's the thing we want to make sure of is that we have some alignment from the residents that these are things we should spend money if we're going to move them forward.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I think it's, it's, I think it's equally important for the administrative staff and the fire department to jointly be involved in these on one level or another because one of the issues that's very clear as you look at our numbers is that, is that we're understaffed and we're not filling staff roles as quickly as we'd like to. And I'm, I'm really pleased to see how well we're doing with EMTs. I'm really pleased to see how well we're doing with our young firefighters. That's really remarkable that, that the department's been able to achieve these kind of levels of numbers and answer these kind of calls. But obviously, they have, the fire department has an equal investment in, we know as a matter of fact that, that the state mandates requiring two EMTs on a call have cost us money. And they, that money comes from the general fund. It doesn't, it's not otherwise supplied. So, we know a lot of facts and maybe the first meetings are really about trying to agree upon what the facts are. And perhaps that's the, that's the way we should approach the August meeting, bringing this back in August, and approach getting the facts out in front of folks so that we have a framework for deciding how we start to approach solutions to those facts. I think that's very, that's a good way to proceed.
I thought the first one was in September.
That was when I was suggesting we have the first, the first.
Workshop.
Workshop. But, but the mayor suggested is that we come back in our August city council meeting
Okay.
to, to flesh out what that's going to look like. Have an agenda, notices, that kind of stuff, if I'm understood correctly.
Good, Ralph? Right. Any other discussion on sixteen? Seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, seventeen is a request from the planning commission to initiate a code amendment. And they've been looking at a couple of issues now, one related to fencing in the front yard. They have been looking at the possibility of allowing solid fencing within the front yard. They have come to the city council before, you provided some additional comments and directions to them. They have looked at that as well. And also, they've looked at, a request by somebody who has a former water tank site. There are some special carve-outs in the way our code is written for standards modifications related to like former water tank or other sites that were less than an acre. There are two references in our codes related to those particular properties and which standards modifications they can apply for. One lists the size of the property, height of the property, and setbacks. The other limits them to the size of the property and the height of the property, but does not include setbacks to it. So, planning commission's recommendation is to go through the process to amend the code to make them both consistent with a setback reduction allowed only at the planning commission level. So, if somebody on one of those properties is seeking a setback reduction, they would go to planning commission for approval on those particular properties. So, that would remove some inconsistencies between two sections of our code and also put in place a more robust review of any potential development on those former water tank sites. As one, one component of it. The other is the fencing. And they're still looking at the fencing. They would like to make a request that they are able to move forward with the requirement for solid fencing in the front yard area, that it is within, let the fencing be at least ten feet from the property, designed to match the house, include landscaping, but only approvable by the planning commission. So, essentially, it would require a planning commission approval for a solid fencing within the front yard area, so anywhere along the street are, are the two things they would like to move through the process to make a code amendment on. So, because we're going to be doing a code amendment, it'll spend some staff time and also some city attorney dollars and other things that comes to council to authorize them to be able to move forward in that process. And ultimately, they would develop, draft, review, and then make a recommendation to you as the city council to move forward with either adopting or not adopting their recommendation.
Just to clarify, so there, you're talking about a ten-foot setback with landscaping? Was that the, what you said?
That and designed to match, some sort of design to the wall, not just a solid block.
It would have to run, it would have to be, the planning commission would have to look at it and approve it.
It'd be approvable only by the planning commission, not at a staff level.
Okay.
There are really two issues here and they're not connected, right? So, there's the, the small irregular water department rule and we have two, two standards that are in conflict and they're proposing a way to rationalize those standards. And second, there's this idea of a solid, a solid front wall on which we've never approved in the city before. So, that's, do they have consensus on this?
Not complete consensus. There is still a commissioner that is not a hundred percent on board with it. But they're close enough. They're, they're pretty close.
There's a four to five vote?
Yes.
I mean, the, the one thing that I would always, that I would have very cautious about is, you know, if law enforcement and the fire department needs to be able to see what's beyond a solid front wall. If they can't see beyond it, they're approaching danger. So, I, I would hope that the plan, I, I haven't followed this. I would hope that the commission is paying attention to that requirement because that's really why we've always had, you know, viewscape that allows people that are approaching to know what's beyond the wall. I, and I understand the, the desire to have that, but I don't know how you deal with, you know, the FD and the, and the LSO being able to safely go through a gate like that. I just don't know.
I'm going to also indicate I have some reluctance on, on the solid wall issue.
And, and so do I for the reasons you've mentioned, among others. The, I believe a few months ago, somebody had to remove a gate because the gate blocked the view from, a solid gate blocked the view from the fire department. Secondly, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the, in the planning commission about forbidding future chain link fences. And one of the arguments made by one of the individuals in favor of that made, made before the city council was that the chain link fences are, that tend to deteriorate and it look kind of ghetto or something like that. I believe that's, I'm not sure if that's the word to use, something like that. But the, but also made the comment that the more expensive fences we need because they add, add additional security to the people living there, which of course is true. Now, the question I had at the time was, a person who can only afford a relatively inexpensive chain link fence doesn't get security and yet we cut all kinds of slack for the guy who wants to build a solid six-foot wall. Again, I was rather surprised that this item was brought forward as opposed to a cohesive fence amendment covering all the different types of fences. So, right now, I'd be reluctant to go forward, to vote to go forward with this at this time.
All right. So, do I have a motion?
I don't think we've thoroughly discussed this thing yet because it's a, I mean, you got two separate items on here. You've got the block wall and stuff and it, I mean, I don't like the one-size-fits-all thing because you have, maybe on a downslope and things, you can have it and it fits and it doesn't, as long as the planning commission is taking a look at it and they're reviewing it. And, I mean, I want to support the planning commission too and, and what they want to come up with. And I just don't see that, you know, necessarily one-size-fits-all because you've got the elevation changes in the city and things and you could put a block wall with a proper setback and have landscape in, in front of it and it would be no impact whatsoever. But maybe on an upslope, if you had a large wall, it would look terrible. So, it's, I don't know how to differentiate all those things and outside of letting the planning commission actually look at it and review things to make a determination when it works and when it doesn't work type thing.
So, Ralph, is this part, as Norm described, is this part of a, a bigger effort they're working on to seek clarity in kind of our fencing and screening options? Or is this just really a one-off issue that we're trying to?
We originally started with looking more deeply at all the fencing standards and requirements. That's kind of where we got to prohibiting chain link. And then we moved a little more, the discussion moved a little more to focus on allowing a solid wall in the front yard setback. We're currently today, we allow a maximum of forty-two inches solid and then ninety percent open work wrought iron above it in those areas to allow a full solid six-foot wall within that front yard setback area and not necessarily like prohibiting chain link. And that, that component of it came out of it and we leave that aspect of it as the code today. We would still allow chain link fencing, to not remove that aspect out of the code. We focus a little more on the ability to allow a solid wall within the front yard setback area.
Weren't they also looking at wood or no wood or other materials?
They did look at it and consider like vinyl materials and potentially prohibiting vinyl and, and other wood and other aspects of it. But their, their focus kind of came down more onto the solid wall. If we allow a solid wall, it'd be more architecturally compatible with the house. It's something that's either going to have a stone veneer or stucco finish to it and include landscaping, so it's going to better reflect the, the architecture of the house. You can set parameters on them if you want to maintain, like move forward with the code adoption, but continue to leave chain link fencing as an option for people and not prohibit it in the code. Look at all options of materials in the front or restrict the front to just a, what would be more of a, a block wall with the material on it, stone veneer, stucco, decorative cap. Put some guardrails on it for them.
Is there something like leave the, they could come in if they want the solid wall and ask for a, not a standards mod, but rather than just a blanket no? Because right now, it's what, thirty-six and forty-two, what is it, forty-two? And the rest has to be permeable, open?
Their thought and idea is exactly that. It's not something that's approvable over the counter, would have to go through a process. So, it could be established as like a, a standards modification that could be approved. Like right now, driveway entrances, like we, if you want, if you have two different streets and you take access from two different streets, that would have to be approved by the planning commission, not something we could prove at a staff level. Establish this as a standard, like a standards modification. So, someone would have to go through that standards modification process, approval by the planning commission, no, no staff, no ministerial, no staff level approval for it, something purely at the planning commission level. So, that way you know, someone's going to go through that process, who's going to spend the, the effort and the time to make it through that process, is going to put together a quality product and nice fence.
So, really, what is the planning commission asking for on this? They want it at your level or they want to, they want something simple that can come before them that isn't a big expensive process?
They want something that can go before them. A fence wouldn't necessarily, something that would go before them.
Without having to pay the normal standards modification fee?
We have a minor exception process. It could fit within that minor exception process, which has a more narrowed scope of notice to neighbors and review and approval levels. So, we could look at something that's similar along that, that process.
But all of it would have to be reviewed by the, go.
The planning commission right now is looking to set that approvable limit at the planning commission level, not at staff level. So, it'd be something that would have to go into planning commission for approval.
And that's what they're asking for with this?
Yes.
Okay.
As I understand it, they're just, they're, it's sort of disjunctive. So, they're asking for us to give them permission to draft revised sections to deal with all ex-water property. And I just have no problem with that. I, if they, if they have a proposal about solid walls with conditions, then I suggest they enumerate those conditions and the solid walls and how they would approach handling it administratively and then present it to us as a package. But they're two separate items as far as I'm concerned. Water property is easy. Fencing is going to be more difficult, but it says in here in your comments that they're going to have certain conditions you can do, there's certain conditions you can't. We can't act upon that until we, whether we think it's good, bad, or indifferent, until we know what the conditions are. So, I suggest they bring it back with the conditions.
Well, can't we allow the planning commission to develop those things and make the decisions?
They don't do ordinances, we do. So, they can, they can recommend ordinances to us. They can recommend changes to the, to the zoning rules.
So, would that, that'd be an ordinance change, you know?
Both of these things would require an ordinance change. So, they would, they would be the one to draft the language and go through that ordinance process and submit it to council for council's ultimate adoption.
So, conceptually, the water thing's no big deal. I don't, I don't think. But conceptually, the other one has, you have to know what the conditions are going to allow a solid fence in. And we have to have a hearing on that to, they can recommend that. But I would try, you know, I would convey to them that there are those of us who don't think strongly about having, you know, Brian's more, well, there is other exceptions, that's true. That's why they have conditions, I suspect. But we have to know what they are before we can say, you know, go ahead and draft something up. Why waste the time? Why waste Todd's time if we don't need to?
I'll continue to work with the planning commission to refine and bring you back a robust.
Sounds like we're sending it back to the planning commission for further refinement. Okay. Eighteen, guardrail replacement at sixteen sixty-two Hacienda Road.
I decided before you, I, city council had previously approved the work to make repairs to various guardrails along Hacienda Road that had been damaged in accidents. In the time since that was approved and, and we went out to construction, the other half of one, the other half of a damaged guardrail section along Hacienda between east and west was damaged in an accident. So, now the total guardrail needs to be replaced. So, the additional cost to complete the new damaged section is a little over fifteen thousand dollars. So, for that one, it's, it's like we were talking about earlier, over our staff signing authority. So, we're not able to approve that agreement to move forward or that contract for the contractor to go in and replace that section of guardrail. So, the request is for the planning commission, or sorry, city council to authorize the total replacement of the guardrail in that section. So, be authorized the finance manager to amend the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and increase account number one oh one four fifty PWD sixty-six fifty by twenty-eight thousand two, six hundred and twenty dollars, which is the total cost for both sections of guardrail replacement. Authorize a fifteen percent contingency in the amount of four thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. Authorize the finance manager to amend the budget by the, the four thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollar contingency. Authorize the city manager to approve the purchase order per the city's purchasing policy and authorize staff to schedule surface contractors to complete the work on the guardrail section. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Move approval.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John, yes. Ralph, on this, have, have we had any success at the insurance claims of the people that are hitting these guardrails?
We actually have been, we've been in communication with our insurance company and are going through the process with them. are going through the process with them. They're helping us with that, that component of it, of being able to recover the costs. The first half of that, that guardrail was a hit and run. There was no report. The car didn't remain on scene. It left. The second one, the vehicle did, there is insurance and we're going through the insurance process to be able to recoup that cost.
Okay. I think I went by during both of them. One of them, the car was sitting out in the middle of Hacienda Road. I don't know how it could have gotten away because it was pretty badly.
That was the one that has insurance.
And the other one, the vehicle was still there. I guess the people left, is that what you, if the vehicle was down in the?
An uninsured. The first, the first accident, vehicle was damaged, people fled, but the vehicle was uninsured.
All right. Nineteen.
Nineteen, so this is for the highway safety improvement project. So obviously we have work under going for the avocado cross signal and restriping along Hacienda Road. The other component that we received funding for was replacement of guardrails within the city. This project has been looked at several times. They went out to bid a couple of times originally. The city council awarded a contract to JMC Squared back in February of 2023 to begin the project. In that process, we received some additional funding. So back in April of 2023, we amended the original budget to increase it to $80,000 for design of the guardrail project in total. In the time since, staff and the city engineer had been working with the roads advisory committee on the replacement of guardrails, the location and the areas to replace guardrail sections, and ended up looking at changing the scope of where we should be replacing the guardrails through that process. So we made a deviation in the scope of the project. It was above sort of the abilities of that particular design firm at that, that time we were looking at. Guardrail sections that would need a lot of slope repair, regrading or retaining walls to be able to accommodate meeting Caltrans standards for the installation of guardrails. Caltrans lays out different options and standards for how guardrails need to be installed. So we started looking at the locations that would be the most expensive to make those work at. We went to the county to look, to work with the county. They have all of the people on staff that are needed to do the geotechnical work, the design work and all those aspects of it. Their quote to fix a couple of locations, the design was more than we were awarded for the entire project. So we went back to Caltrans, have a conversation with Caltrans related, trying to seek additional funding for it. I said, there's no more funding for this. Our recommendation to you is to replace the guardrails that you can replace relatively easily within your budget that you have. So we went back to the roads advisory committee, relooked at guardrail sections, revised and narrowed the scope of where we'd be looking at design replacements for guardrails and went back to the original engineering firm that we were working with. On those locations, they are able to pick up and complete those. Obviously because of the scope of the project has changed since originally, there'd be a little cost associated with it, it's going to be slightly more. The fee for the new project is $69,320. We only expended a small portion of the original budget starting the project. So there's about $28,000 worth of additional funding, of funding that was allocated in the original amount for city council. So the task to complete would be about $40,989. When you count that with what was originally spent, it would potentially put it at like just over $80,000, which was the original design award. So the recommendation is to increase the professional services agreement with JMC Squared for the engineering services for the guardrail placement by $9,020.80, which is the additional needed above and beyond the $80,000 already authorized by the city council. And authorize the budget amendment to increase account number 101450 PWD 6830 by $9,020.80 so we can complete the design component of the guardrail project and put it out to bid to replace those guardrail sections. The proposal from the engineers there, along with the segments of guardrails that we have refined with the roads advisory committee.
Have we used this company before?
We have not used this company before.
And how did we end up with them?
Through the RFP process. It went through two rounds of RFPs and we sent it out wide and far to try to get a company to bid on it, the guardrail design, and this was the only company who bid on it. It gets hard to find people willing to take on guardrail projects.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll just make a motion to move approval, then I, my questions are answered.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John, yes. All right, item 20, Hacienda Road Safety Improvement Project Construction Management and Inspection Agreement Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is related to similar project, different component of it. This is related to the construction management and inspection for the traffic signal and the striping along Hacienda Road. In May of, sorry, it should be 24, not 25, awarded a contract to NV5 for the construction management and inspection for traffic signal and striping along Hacienda Road in the amount of $84,440. The project has been in construction for a little over a year, so we're nearing the final phases, the completion of the project. To be able to get to that component or that part of it, we have completed, we've essentially exhausted the amount of funds that were remaining in the original account and NV5 provided us with a proposal as to what they feel is the additional needed to get us to completion of the project, which is, would be a technical increase of $68,888. Would be the increase to be able to get through the final phases of construction, the close out with the construction management component and the follow-up with Caltrans for the paperwork component of, of getting things showing the construction completion and end of the contract with our contractor. So since this one has been going a very long time, originally back at this time, council was very much in the moment of looking at the costs and the dollar amounts and the things to, to squeeze as much as we can for the projects. And this one, so they looked at, trying to look at what they needed to do at a bare minimum to get us to that point through the project. Obviously, we did not anticipate the complexity of that signal. We have three contractors involved, two jurisdictions, utility companies and manufacturing of poles and equipment and things. So this project has gone a lot longer, has been a lot more labor intensive as far as construction management and inspection to get to the point where we're at today, where we're nearly done with the project. So that's, the request tonight is to make an amendment to their original, the original budget and authorize the increase by $68,888. This isn't a, our agreement and our proposal isn't like a direct cost, so they get paid that. It's, it's what we, they spend the time on the particular projects and it's billed hourly, like their construction management and the inspection from the previous roads project. That project went relatively quickly and smoothly. There was only a couple of issues to work out on that project and it actually came back about $50,000 under their original contract amendment, contract approvals for that particular project. So this, this is one of the things where the project has taken longer than anybody had anticipated it has taken to be able to get to the end of the signal and the striping along Hacienda and it has been a lot more labor intensive in, in getting there. So there is a need to increase the cost and the expense for construction management and inspection of it. In the end of the day, when we look at the numbers, including this increase and all of what the contract, the construction charges should be, we should be within the 15% that the council authorized for the project, 15% contingency for the project.
So, Rafferty, is NV5 directly or indirectly related to any of the delays on the project? Any, any, did any, NV5 miss any design issues that they should have caught as part of the project that's now causing the delays, i.e. the design of the, the design of the standard that caused us to have to be delayed significantly? Did that, I mean, they do design review, right?
They do design work for us in the street projects.
Shouldn't they have caught the fact that that light standard was too tall? And so aren't they directly responsible for some of these delays by not, by that miss in their design review?
No, they, they weren't responsible for the complete design review of this project. It was looked at and gone through all the way through the process. The height of the pole originally went through Edison for review, for the utility review and everything. It wasn't, that wasn't brought up at the time of Edison's review of it. It wasn't until we went to them to shut the power off and the planner, the local planner, our local planner for that one, looked at the design of the pole and the height of the pole and noticed, noticed that it was too tall and that's when we started having the issues with the height of the pole for that one. I don't think NV5, especially construction management and?
Let me pull through on that just a little bit. So did we submit the height of the pole to Edison and they approved it with the original height?
From what I understand, it went through the Edison review process, so like all the utility companies went through the review, LA County reviewed it, Caltrans reviewed it, everybody went through that process for it and there was not, that issue didn't get raised until the person who was going to approve the power shut off to be able to set the pole in place. That's the person who ultimately caught it at that very end of the project.
So should, should we be filing a claim then for these additional costs against Edison?
You know, at the end of the day, we're just trying to get the, the signal in, it's been a very long?
Understood, but I mean, again, if, if a miss by that company caused us to incur costs associated with now having to pay for modification of the pole plus, I mean, there's, there's direct billing on this invoice for that, should we be filing a claim?
So as to that point, since that's your employer, correct?
It is.
You should, if we're going to go down that path, you should likely recuse yourself as a potential conflict of interest as a source of income.
I mean, is that something the council wants, I mean, I'll, I'll walk out of the room if the council wants to go down that path, but if the council's not there, then?
You started it ahead of me getting into it because usually change orders are for conditions you run into during the job that nobody knows about. This was not a condition that nobody knew about. This is a pre-existing condition, so why would you have a change order for this pre-existing condition? And it's, I have a problem with it too. I mean, you jumped me, I was going to get into it along those same lines because that's why you do change orders.
I'm going to step out.
Good.
So, I mean, I was just thinking that why should we be liable for something you pay professionals for and you put all the plans out there and they know the height of the wires, they know the height of everything and there's standards for that. And now all of a sudden they're having to redo it and who pays for it?
If you want us to get on the path and look at, do we file a claim with Edison for being missed as part of that, their design review of the utility? We go back to the design firm who designed the, the plan, we could, we could do that as well.
Well, who erred on this in your mind?
Who erred on the height of the pole and utilities?
The pole had to be cut down to make it work.
The pole had to be cut down. It's going to be between the design professional who designed it, so the firm that designed the pole and I would say Edison for looking at the plans and reviewing the plans as part of their, their, their design review of, of those poles for that one.
I mean, wouldn't it be the firm that designed the height of the poles and everything? I mean, Edison to me is, they're caught in this too, but that's after the fact type thing. The initial review or the initial design has to take into where the utilities are.
Initial design is supposed to take into account for where all the utilities are. There was potholing that was done to locate underground utilities and surveying done to figure out what is out there and locations, all of those. Ultimately, the heights of the poles should have been the appropriate level and all the overhead utilities should have been included and calculated as part of that original design.
I mean, didn't that slow the project and add into all these costs that we're incurring on the whole thing, not just the?
It slowed the project slightly to be, to verify the exact height of the pole, what the pole would be, what it needs to be reduced by, what Edison's approval requirement is for the ultimate height of the pole that terminates and how much needs to be done. And then the pole had to be modified. We needed to have a deputy inspector or welding inspector there to, to witness the, the modifications to the pole.
So there are really two issues. One is the original design was not performed by NV5, it was performed by someone else.
Correct.
So the, the question is, in during that design process, there was an approval process by the Edison company?
As far as I'm aware of, yes. The, the plan goes to all utility companies for, for review since it's new work.
So that, that answers the question and the, there should be, I would strongly support a claim against Edison because one of two things happened. Either, either that approval was done sloppily and not consistent with what ultimately happened or the person from Edison who came on electrification, killing electrification of the line was wrong. Somebody was wrong. Somebody didn't do their job at Edison. You can't blame the design firm, I don't think logically, if they, if Edison approved the design, you know? So any comment to that effect would not make any sense to me. So really what you got is, it's, this is really, we should formulate a claim against Edison and, and narrative and bring it back to the council as soon as you can do that. Beyond that, I think we have to pay the bill.
Shouldn't the claim go against the designer and Edison?
I don't think so. If, if in fact the design was approved by Edison, then the designer is fine because that's the issue. The issue was, was it within the 30 inches or the three feet or the six feet of the, of the, of the umbrella that has to be around the line? And if Edison approved it, if they hadn't approved it, the design firm would have changed the specs on the pole and everything would have been fine. So I don't see how they have, I mean, I don't, I don't see them having liability as long as Edison approved it. If they just did it and there was no prior Edison approval, yeah, then they're stuck. But again, you have to document that there was approval and that stuff before you make the claim.
I mean, originally, when I got into this thing, I thought we're, we're increasing this thing a tremendous amount on the NV5 side of the whole thing. And I thought, well, what's all driving this? And now it sounds like you get into more things causing the delays and everything else that drove their costs up. I guess if, if you're totally comfortable with NV5, or I was thinking about getting into full accounting for the whole entire job, maybe, maybe you have that already from them. Because they've added, they've added a tremendous amount of hours here and I don't have the original package or the accounting, you know, in front of me, but maybe you have that. But as, before I was, in my mind, at one council member authorizing additional this kind of money, I would definitely want for you to review a whole entire accounting for the whole entire job.
Brian, if I might, why don't I just move that we continue this to the next regular city council meeting to come back with, Angie has a completed, edit costing project for this. I've got a copy of it here, I got it tonight. So everyone should have that and then we should have some, enough time to get the documentation about the prior SE approval.
We could look into, yeah, the exact approvals and all that process and bring you a little more details on that.
But I think we should be looking at putting in a claim against this thing.
Yeah, well, we have to document the fact that Edison blew it the first time, right? So we can't do much with a claim until we have that documentation, we penned the claim. claim. So I'm just suggesting that we push it to the regular meeting in August. Rafferty will come back with that proof, we'll discuss and approve making the claim. Angie will provide all of us a copy of the finished project dollars.
Yeah, I would like a little more backup on what NV5 did. This, the staff report, is that just a typo? It says May 13th, 2025, and May 13th, 2024, it's the same amount?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that should be 20, 2024.
2024, so they had a projection, and then somehow it almost, not quite doubled? They were that far off? So I'd like some backup. I don't want to prolong this. And do they bill, do they bill like, are they out there a whole hour, or do they, do they bill an hour if they just come, or do they just bill the time they're there? Do they have the guy, and he's here every day practically?
When they're, when they're working, he's, he's here. The inspector for the project is here. It's not like Michael, where he comes to look at a foundation, looks at the foundational leaves. This inspector for public works is, if they are here working, he's onsite working, watching and seeing what's going on and overseeing.
It's not the same guy that's working on the roads projects? It's some other guy?
Currently, the, this particular project, it is the same inspector. He also did work on the roads project previously.
What's his name?
His name is Mike Helma. Mike.
Is he the guy that we always run into when we're here?
He's usually got a white brim hat on, his NV5 vest. You, you see him a lot of times in and out. He's in to check in with myself and Grace typically daily if he's here. He jacks in with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he's out there the full eight hours to bill for an eight-hour day?
If he's, if they're, if they're working a full day, he, he's out there the, the full day.
Is that necessary?
Yeah.
Yes, for this type of project, correct.
So I think some council members got some email comments about some possible design issues, not, not related to the pole.
We're looking, we're looking at those right now as well.
So does, again, does NV5 bear responsibility if something is constructed incorrectly or not to code? If that's, if that's what it turns out has happened, I mean, do they bear any responsibility?
They are only working based off of the design plans that they didn't prepare. So they didn't prepare or construct those design plans, they are only following what was done with the design.
So they're not responsible for ensuring that the design is compliant with things like ADA requirements?
Our city engineers should be looking at those aspects of ADA compliance and, and looking at all of those aspects. Those ramps were, were modified because some of the grades out there were not working or working against each other when we were doing the, the ramp. So there is, there was a design change related to those ramps on cap.
If I might, to make sure we don't fall back into conflict again, I was going to propose a motion where this item is continued to the regular meeting in August, and during that time period, Angie will provide all of the members of the council with the actual completed costing items from NV5 for the whole project and revenue. And, and Rafferty will determine whether we have sufficient evidence that the original design for the original height of the pole was approved by Southern California Edison in anticipation of us being able to bring a claim forward.
All right, so you should not participate in that motion.
I, I just have a, is this grant money we're talking about, or general fund money, the $68,000?
John, you should, you should go.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we continue this to the August meeting, so we can bring you back that further details, and we don't have to keep kicking the mayor out of the room.
Okay, well, that, I'd be interested in that.
So that was the motion, right Greg?
That was the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Carol, your mail protein, you want to?
Norm?
Yes.
Carol's a yes. Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion's passed. The matter will be continued to the next meeting. Okay, I guess we'll start on, what are we on, 21?
You know, if we could just get a cone of silence installed here.
So if we delay this, Rafferty, is it going to slow down the construction, or is this just an after-the-fact thing we have to? That's the only concern that I have.
Theoretically, at the moment, all the work isn't done and installed for that we have. There are two things that are on backorder that we're waiting for to come in, and we're mostly waiting for Edison to energize the meter so we can begin the turn-on process. So right now, we wouldn't necessarily be putting anything at a delay. It's, we're now in the waiting game of energizing the meter to turn the signal on.
Got it. So this is an after-the-fact charge that they're asking us for?
This is to complete the project, so we're looking at the last bit of where we need to be to get there. So-
So you're com, I just want to make sure, you're comfortable pushing this off to August 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate, can I make an additional comment, if I might?
Do I need to leave?
No, 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 it's, it's pretty generic. I was just reading the, again, the first paragraph in the background of this, in the, in the agenda report. "Due to there being multiple jurisdictions, contractors and engineers involved in the project, the timelines and complexity have been greater than originally anticipated by staff. The time required for construction, management, and inspection have significantly increased to coordinate with all the agencies and contractors." First time I read that, my reaction was essentially, how many knuckleheads does it take to screw in a light bulb? I, I just, you know, building, installing traffic lights is pretty standard, and I'm sure this is not the first time where it's involved on the borderline of multiple jurisdictions. But this is, these, these costs and these problems have just seemed to be going out of control, not our fault, but the fault of us in the general sense as citizens and as of council members supposedly having some influence on how things are going. But it's, that's my comment, thank you.
All right, so we're just going to continue this then till August 11th. Got it. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our administrative items. Any council member information items and/or required meeting attendance reports?
I'd like to make one, just in general, Red Cross has, the Red Cross has announced they're having another blood shortage again, which usually happens in the summer, so those of you who would consider donating blood, contract 1-800-RED-CROSS, that's the phone number to make an appointment. I would recommend it if you so desire, thank you.
Rafferty and I attended the JPIA annual meeting, pretty much status quo, the same people got re-elected. It sounds like they've got some major construction there at their site they were pretty proud of, where they're going to be doing training. I, I don't want to put more on staff's plate, but one of the things that I did have a chance to talk to one of their staffers about was they have, what do they call them, Rafferty, hit, not hit teams, but like special teams or something?
Special resource teams.
Special resource teams that they can lend to a city to get a special project done, and I would propose that we approach them about a policy, an HR policy review for the city. It's, the person said absolutely, we do those all the time for cities. So maybe we can agendize that, Rafferty, for next month, so that we can look at starting an HR policy review, or overarching policy review for our city. Hopefully, we'll have the last of our issues resolved soon, and we can, we can get that done. Anything else? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Then I will adjourn the meeting.